Good evening, folks. The scheduled meeting of the Southern Shore County Council for October 2nd, 2012. Please join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since our last meeting, we have lost three of our good citizens on Southern Shore. Glenn Boone, who's been on the cycle for like twenty-five years, he's been here a long time. And we lost Hank Kelly, who I don't know if he's been here a while, I've been here, but I'm sorry to see him go. We have little else than Dan Shales. Dan was special, who's seen many of us because he, over many years, served down in many classes, including, I believe, he served on council, one of which I've served on all time. I believe David Sanders served all time, and Joey. So we miss Dan, and thank you, but I'd like to please talk in a little side. You know, we have, yeah, the council decided several weeks ago that we would take our country meetings, and I suppose if we can get it going right, they'll be available for showing on California, for the benefit of those who don't have an opportunity to come and be with us. I have a special, special thing to my chief caller. I know you're moving, so we got a lot of...
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, citizens of Southern Shore. It's my honor and privilege to present a letter of commendation to Officer Tracy Mann. And I'm gonna read it to you before I head to the room. On Saturday, June 9th, 2012, Officer Tracy Mann responded to the Detroit request from Kitty Hawk Police Department, where medical assistance is called. A call came in as a CPR in progress at 5,001, which means your trail in Kitty Hawk. Officer Mann was close by, and she responded immediately. On arrival, Officer Mann assessed the situation. She deployed her AED, her defibrillator, to the victim, and was able to revive him and also stabilize the victim into EMS and fire personnel, arrived at scene. Both EMS and fire personnel that were on scene clearly stated that if not for Officer Tracy Mann's quick response and employment of the AED, that the victim would probably not survive. The town of Southern Shore's its citizens and visitors are truly blessed to have such a dedicated and caring police officer serving. I commend Officer Tracy Mann for a job well done, and I sincerely thank her not only personally, but also in the hours of the town of Southern Shore's service. This letter of commendation allows one fellow Officer Mann to repay a $12 personal payout there. One other thing, back in April 2011, she did the same thing about, so she did a really good case. Tracy, come on up.
I thought it would occur a bit, but I forgot it didn't. I apologize for that.
Tracy, before you pull out that door, just a moment. I want to thank you so much for having the council for work here to bring with our police force. And through the time you've been on our force, you've become a noted officer throughout the other names, and we appreciate you very much. Thank you. Council, we have an agenda to take a look at.
May I move you through the agendas presented?
I'll say it. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those same side. The two that did approve. We have an update on the Dare County comprehensive transportation plan, and we have Steve Lambert. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor, happy to meet you. Good evening. My name is Steve Lambert. I work for the Evermore Commission, which is the 10-count regional agency that oversees Northeast, Marne Hurford. I oversee the Evermore Rural Planet Organization that represents 10 counties when it comes to transportation planning. In August of 2011, the transportation planning branch of North Carolina Department of Transportation and Dare County initiated this study to cooperatively develop the Dare County Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which they used to call the Thoroughfare Plan, which includes the towns of Duck, Southern Shores, Kitty Hawk, Killable Hills, Nagseth, and Manial. Existing and anticipated deficiencies will be determined through an analysis of the transportation system, looking at both current and future travel patterns. For the Dare County Transportation Plan, travel demand will be projected from 2012 to 2040 using a trend line analysis based on a seasonal traffic counts from 1993 to 2010. Typically, travel demand is based on trend line analysis using AADT, which is Average Annual Daily Traffic History. The Dare County CTV Committee, which included West, opted to instead look at traffic counts that are based on AADT history, but then converted them to traffic counts which represent the average weekday in June. The converted June traffic counts will be the basis for 2040 traffic predictions and capacity deficiencies. In addition, local land use plans and growth expectations will be used to further refine future growth rates and patterns. The Dare County CTV Committee worked within the CTOT to estimate population growth, economic development, potential, and land use trends to determine the potential impacts on the future transportation system in 2040. Existing and future travel demand is compared to existing roadway capacity. Capacity deficiencies occur when the traffic volume of a roadway exceeds a roadway's capacity. Roadways are considered near capacity when the traffic volume is at least eighty percent of the capacity. I'm here today to ask for your official approval of projected data used to determine future deficiencies, uh, excuse me, future deficiencies. Your approval can be documented as part of the official minutes of the meeting. And basically, the reason I'm here today is, that was my official spiel, is basically, the committee that we work with, which includes West and all the other town planners and managers and whatnot, we decided as for Dare County that we need to look more thoroughly at the traffic numbers that we were using. And we thought the numbers that were for the average annual day weren't good enough for the specific transportation we needed for this county. So we looked at all the different months of the, of the traffic patterns, and we decided that June, which was not the highest, like June, August were, that they would be the best numbers that we should use to six, put into the future traffic demand line. And that's why I'm here today, is just to ask for that approval, make sure that you guys know what we're doing, make sure you guys know that when we start looking at future recommendations, those are the numbers that we're gonna be using.
I was not aware that we were going to ask to approve anything tonight. This is the first time I've heard numbers, not the first council or third number. I would think, council, that's a thing for us to do, to put this issue on our next meeting agenda, and ask for a study paper from our town planner on the issue, so that we thoroughly understand what we're doing, or try to narrow it down.
I can definitely work with West and put some together for the next agenda, if you'd like that, sir.
I would appreciate it.
Yeah. When is your next?
November 7th. October 16th. October 16th.
Fourteen days, sorry.
Yeah, I can have something to do with that this week, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Well, wait just a minute, Steve. Don't you have any questions, Steve? We'll work on it, and it will be on our agenda at our next meeting.
All right, no problem. Thank you.
And you know, another recommendation on our meeting tonight, when I turned out, the council on Dare County.
Jody, would you join me now? Recently appointed to the Government Education Access Channel Committee, had the opportunity to attend two meetings, and find that I'm honestly amazed at what's going on, the work that goes into the production, the planning, where they're at at this point, and what they have planned for the future. It's really amazing, and that's just after two meetings. On the other hand, Jody has been on that committee for nine years, and I have a feeling it has something to do with where they're at at this point, and, but I do appreciate the opportunity to act in your stead. So tonight, they've asked that I present this certificate of appreciation for your good work on the GovEd Access Committee.
Does that have a picture somewhere in front?
Thank you.
And thank you, I appreciate this.
You are. Can you imagine nine years of committee meeting?
Yeah, but it's such a fun committee to work on. These guys really enjoy it, the people, the discussions, and it is really exciting because since I've been on it, we had not just the government channel, but the education channel, and listening to some of the educational proposals and things that the kids do in the programs, they're directing their own TV programs and so on. It's amazing, it really truly is amazing. Thank you.
I believe I was with you on council when the council appointed you to PR representative, wasn't it?
I succeeded Jody.
That's right. Well, thank you, Jody. Been a good runner. Thank you, David, for agreeing to take it off. Hope you have success on the run. Jody, did?
As Jody said, I think we'll be appointing for...
Council, this tab one, you have minutes of our last meeting, for our consideration and approval. Any other comments, problems you have with, if not, there's an motion to approve.
So, who?
A second.
You have a second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, same side. We have this. Also, we have a senate agenda, Big Sweet Day for 2012. We also have Brother Williams supporting the engine funding for the Metro Valley. I ask for your consideration of this and move to approve.
That's one question, if you can. One question. Is this Big Sweet Day, is this just a change for the revenue today, and will we approve the last name?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes, change, I'm doing my thing. Will someone move approval, would be considered agenda?
And would we approve the senate agenda as presented?
Second.
All those in favor, aye. Close, same side.
Do you want to just make another comment in this seat? I just saw the news here in Walpole, Kansas, that the bridge state committees are going to be on Friday on the bridge.
I've asked Bob to address that, if someone's doing public comments.
I just have one question after the meeting. But this is one of the Friday, we're going to access to them, so they're accepting public comments until Thursday, at Friday.
Right, as soon as the mayor signs it, we will email it to the committee clerk on the line.
I was gonna sign it when we have the book, but it has almost, so, sign it first thing in the morning, Gary.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Stafford Board, Town Planner, Mr. Westhead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Very great report, thanks, Mike, for your 9th September, preliminary inspection numbers. Four zoning permits were issued, twenty building permits were issued, consisted of two new same childhood roads, two additions, sixteen others, and ninety-six building inspections conducted, and there were fifty-three different job sites, and the total amount of fees collected in September was $12,234. Any questions?
I have one question to do with this, but how is our bike path moving along?
The application, we believe is decent, we started working on the application, so it'll take some time, but I'll continue on the age of, as we do.
Good question. The bike path, or is there any competition there?
There is a bicycle element to it. I have not, always I'm steering committee for that part of it, but there is a bicycle element.
We could not have, if our town is not having any input to that at all?
Well, or the steering committee itself, being I was not on the steering committee, I was not there to get input for our town's consideration, doesn't mean what I discussed.
Any other question?
That's something that we could certainly ask Steve Lambert for the next presentation.
Thank you very much. Steve, Mr. Ross Mitchell from the Civic Association is with us. Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. You just, you just stay right there, Ross. Where do you see Farman at? I should check the devil's check, shouldn't I? I also should put on my reading glasses.
For the month of September 2012, the calls for service officers responded to 791 calls for service. As you can see up there, some of the breakdowns, 39 foot patrols, 32 traffic control, conducted 28 residence checks, 241 business checks, investigated cook, conducted 26 follow-ups and criminal investigations, responded to three domestics, six murder vehicle accidents, one burglary, ten alarms, 27 suspicious person calls, eight assist motors, and responded to six related calls for operating systems. As far as incidents and actual crimes that were reported, we had 16 in September, and some of the more important ones, a note, a seizure, one burglary, and two larcens, and two criminal damage fraud. Officers made seven criminal arrests in the month of September, they conducted 30 by traffic stops, out of their 50 by traffic stops, they issued 17 written citations, and another 29 learning citations. Most of this was committed to himself, officer. He had about 48 ordinance violations, maybe seven of those requiring five work animal warnings, and 11 work animal citations. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Farman?
Good evening. For the month of September, we had 57 total calls, of which 41 were medical first responder calls. I think for the first time since I've been walking away, I've known fire calls. We're stupid, though. This compares to, last year, we had 41 calls from the city. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Town Planner, Mr. Sam Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Two things to report on tonight for the planning board. At our last meeting, the planning board addressed ZTA 1202 on outdoor lighting, and you do not have any folks this evening, so at this time, I'm not going to go into recommendations on it, but I will address those at our last meeting. Second thing is the election of the planning board officers. The planning board officers are elected by the planning board, and they're from chair and vice chair of the planning board, and the results of the election are subject to the approval of the town council. In the recent election, I was elected chair again, and Mike Flores was elected as vice chair again. And so I guess my recommendation is that you approve the elections of the planning board. Any questions?
Any questions, council? Do you have any other motion to approve the election on Mr. Sam Williams as chair of the planning board, and Mr. Mike Flores as vice chair of the planning board?
Sure.
You have a second?
I'll say that.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, same side.
Thank you.
Give it up for the board. Thank you, Senator. Finally, we're ready for Ross.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Monday night, October 8th, at 7:00 PM, Civic Association is, will be held in their general membership meeting. Everyone is invited to come out and hear our guest speaker, Chief Cole, who will be speaking on the difference between low-speed vehicles and golf carts and their lawful use in Southern Shores. Members will also be voting for the 2013 budget. Refreshments will be served prior to the meeting. Hope you all will join us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Leo, Chico, our realness, and season, you think Leo?
Yes, good evening, sir. Members of, Mr. Mayor, members of council, on Saturday, the CBOA had the semi-annual membership meeting along with our picnic. At that picnic, we also, this meeting, we discussed bylaws that were changing, and hopefully we'll have them available for our large meeting for approval, law and legal committee. So hopefully, we're all ready for voting. We want to thank Al for attending and addressing our members at that, at the date of our meeting. No real arrows fired at this, so thanks for, pretty good.
That was beautiful.
Also, the board would like to thank council for making the funds and identifying the streets there for us in Chico, Chico Trail completion, and it's very good. And the other three streets, Deer Path, Ready Pond, and the other end, the spin drift, look the same. I, yes, there's pain right now, but six months from now, they'll forget about the pain, so, again, the board wants to thank you for your efforts in the tough decisions that come with making the funds available for those infrastructures. Any questions?
Back to Leo. Bob Lomo, who was about five years, has been on the planning board, and he's a great proponent, has done to build the bridge, preserve our roads, committee, and he's been very active and strong and a community member, and we are having sort of a showdown by the legislative committee of the state Friday, and I've asked Bob to speak to this matter, and any other thing he has to say, and because of the peculiar nature of this, I have waited three minutes, I'm up.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and citizens. It is a showdown Friday, 9 o'clock, the legislative committees meeting, joint legislative transportation committees meeting, to determine whether or not the gap funds will be retained for the new curta break, and if they are not retained, that's it.
We're done, because the bidder will not accept going forward unless the state will guarantee gap funding for this bridge for maintenance. So it's very important that all of you let this committee know your feelings. You can go onto the website, www buildthebridge.org. There's a link there where you can automatically send a letter to the legislative committee and let them know how you feel about this. You must do this prior by Thursday. There is no speaking on Friday. There are group, there obviously is a group of us going. We have sponsored a bus that's leaving the marketplace at 4:00, 4:15 in the morning. There's still room on the bus for anybody who would like to come. Just give me a call at my home number, 255-... Just give me a call at my home number, two five five zero seven nine two, and I'll be happy to put your name on the list. We're picking, we're taking people from Duck, Southern Shores, and Currituck. Uh, we have the county commissioners, part of, I don't know how many of them, three or four, I believe, are going with us on the bus. Uh, we're picking them up in Currituck along with other citizens from Currituck. Uh, we will be going there to sit into the meeting. We have our signs for letting them know how we feel. And it's very important that everybody let your feelings be known now, or that's it. Are there any questions? We've come so far, and we're dealing with a legislative committee that is represented by legislators who are from the western part of the state. Originally, the meeting was scheduled to be held in Asheville on the Mid-Currituck Bridge.
I wonder why.
Yeah. But successfully, that got changed by our local legislators, state legislators. So Friday, nine A.M., in the legislator, late, in the legislature, they will be making this determination. And we'll be there in force to let them know how we feel.
You have a room number?
I do, I don't have it with me, but yes, I do.
I'll get it from you.
Yes, I do have the room number.
I'm gonna try to be there, but I don't know quite yet how I'm gonna get there.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bob. Anyone else out there have an urge to speak at public comment? Hearing none, public comment is closed. Counsel, we have a budget amendment under tab four. This is a routine cleanup of year-end business with a very solid explanation of it. And I'm, thank the budget officer for that. Any questions on? None, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move we approve budget amendment number one, as presented.
Let's have a second, please.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. We have a budget amendment. Under tab five, we have a resolution approving a, accepting a gift deed of easement, a little explanation here. Honeysuckle Trail is in our current year's road rebuild program. And early on, we looked at Honeysuckle and thought, my goodness, this is an opportunity to put a cul-de-sac, a turnaround, at the end of Honeysuckle so that the trash trucks and the recycle trucks could come in there and do their business and turn around with backing, without backing into the right-of-way and creating a mess. But the only way we can do it was to obtain an easement on the adjoining property because our right-of-way is only sixty feet, and we need seventy-five. So we went to the owners of the lot, Ed Davenport and his wife Martha, and asked them for a deed of easement to their property so that we could put in a cul-de-sac. And they very graciously granted it at no cost to the town. So all we're doing here is formalizing that deed of easement. It will become, uh, easement will become a part of our responsibility for maintenance forever. But in return, we will have a nice cul-de-sac at the end of Honeysuckle. And I might say that, uh, all those spur streets off Mayberry, which are badly in need of repair, of rebuild, and which I hope we're going to be rebuilding in consecutive years to come, we will have the same problem. There's no turnaround at the end of those spur streets. And as we attack them one by one, I'm hoping that we will be able to negotiate with adjoining property owners and get the gracious reception of the idea of an easement that we got from the Davenport. So that being said, are there any questions about this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Can I make a motion to, uh, I guess to accept the gift deed of easement and the resolution from the Davenport's? Resolution number two thousand and twelve dash ten dash zero two.
I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Town manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Uh, a few items to report on tonight. Uh, happy to report that the town's new recycling contractor began its work yesterday. Waste Management will be picking up the town's recycling now on the same schedule. Also, um, they will be providing a large item pickup, and that date will be October nineteenth. Uh, and as we discussed before, they will also provide bagged vegetative debris pickup, which is grass clippings, anything that can be put in a, in an actual yard plastic bag. They will pick those items up as well. Um, I did want to report to you that Chickahaw Trail is virtually completed, the, the street improvement project. We are running down a list of punch items now before we release the final funds. Um, however, uh, the major parts of that improvement project have been completed. And we are, as I said, just, uh, working on a few, a list of a few items that need to be completed before the, uh, the, the final contingency, or, excuse me, retainage on the contract is released. The Gravy Pond, Deer Path, and Spindrift Street Improvement Project is now well underway. We are really still in the clearing stage at this point of stump removal and clearing in the right-of-ways. There has been some base material already applied on some of the streets, but we are within that schedule and going through the normal routine of responding to, uh, cut utility lines occasionally. That has been limited in this particular job, however. October sixteenth meeting, the town's auditor will be here to present the town audit, the, the audit for last fiscal year to you. Staff met with the auditor today to go over preliminary draft and answer any questions that she still had, uh, final, uh, prior to final preparation. So your audit presentation will be at the workshop meeting on August sixteenth. The... Did want to comment that, um, for the agenda for that meeting, you'll have the rules that the cemetery committee had, will be proposing to you, the rule changes. So look out for those when you get your packet. And I'll be glad to sit down with anybody individually ahead of time if we need to, um, to go over those. But I just wanted to highlight that one agenda item prior to October sixteenth. A brief update on the Tall Pine Bridge project. Uh, I had a phone conference today with, um, Kimley Horn in Raleigh, and they are still in stage of working with DOT about a cost agreement. Um, it is not their particular, um, response, uh, fault that it's been that slow, but DOT and the Federal Highway Commi, uh, Administration take that long to go through this process. So we are still diligently pushing that as fast as we can. Hopefully, as soon as we have a cost agreement, um, that will come back, that will be very soon, and that'll come back to this council for final approval before they actually start doing the engineering work on that project. Did want to update you on efforts that are being made in the canal phase two dredging project. Uh, Tom Bennett and I have, have been meeting with the landowners who have, had agreed to provide, um, spoil transfer sites. We are still, um, waiting to hear from them as to some of the details that will line out with our agreement to use those two sites. Uh, it's imperative that we have that because they've been insisted that they work with the town rather than the contractor on, on a lease or, or use agreement. So we'll be putting out that availability with the specs when we draft those toward the end of the year. The, the specs, of course, will be drafted, will go not only to potential contractors, but also to potential, um, lending, lenders as well. On contractors, we have discussed the project with, uh, five contractors so far, dredging contractors so far, and all of them are very interested in submitting a bid. So that's the due diligence that we're working on right now. So at the turn of the year, with the new year coming in, we'll be ready to go with the, uh, with putting it out for RFP. And we've also, um, talked with the local government commission as well about the fact that we'll be coming to them for a, an agenda item in May of next year. And that's my report. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Again, Mayor.
Here I have one, one question I could, or comment. Uh, back to WMI and their, their new recycling program. I did a little research on them. I understand they are what they call a single-stream recycler. And I wonder if it might be possible to have someone from WMI come in and address the council at a meeting as to tell us how that differs from the recycling that we had before and what the benefit of that is? I know, uh, before we could, we had to separate ones and sevens or certain plastic numbers because our old recycler wouldn't take it. And this new one, uh, it's possible that they'll, they'll take one through sevens. Uh, what do we do with styrofoam? What do we do with plastic bags? Those kinds of questions. Uh, some, some, uh, WMI facilities can handle plastic bags, some can't, so...
I'll be glad to, I'll talk to them and see if we can schedule a time when they can come and give a presentation.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the Juniper Culver Bridge. Has the state responded back to our questions regarding that little dent that's created in the, the bridge?
Yes, the, uh, the, you can see there are six benchmarks that have been painted on the bridge. Um, I've talked to the engineers with the state three times now, and they are monitoring the, what they think is a compaction concern, problem that is, is attributed to compaction. And so that's why they are surveying about every two weeks to, to get a, a better idea of how fast it is. Now, the last engineer, uh, last, uh, conversation I had with Mr. Abel at the division office, he thinks that it is not going down much further, but, uh, regardless, his recommendation at this point is to wait until after the winter to make that correction. They are going to come in on either side of the bridge and do a new tieback with the, um, with the culvert. So that will entail some construction on either side, and then they'll bring up the railings when they do that. So that should be this fall when they do that. But that's the, the answer that I have right now. So we do, of course, we get citizen calls about it fairly often, and we're trying to respond and just stay in touch with the DOT engineer on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, town manager. Mr. Ben Gallup, our town attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything to report this evening.
Thank you. I've been enjoying some of your photos.
Thank you. It's a, it's a side job, side hobby. Uh, the, the job end of it's probably not going to get me anywhere.
Please, uh, as I understand it, you're the official photographer of the Outer Banks surfing community, or some such name?
Uh, I, I would say that Russ and Rob came up with the, uh, language that goes along with the photographs. I just took them.
Well, they're outstanding.
Thank you.
They're, they're a delight. I don't have anything on my mind, uh, tonight, council. Oh, I might mention that the chief and I attended a, uh, I guess it was a symposium in the Dare Edmund Building today at lunch, in recognition that this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we had a very good exchange with, uh, the people at Hotline and the people in the county government who are caught up in this issue of domestic violence. And I believe we had every police chief on the Outer Banks there with the sheriff. It was very productive, for me, a very informative meeting. But be aware, this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Purple ribbon. And in spite of what you might believe, our town is not free of domestic violence. We have a police force under Chief Cole that is very well-trained and handle, handle those situations. And, uh, I personally am very appreciative. Larry?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Can't see you.
Oh, sorry.
David?
Uh, just a couple of comments and things I've noticed. Uh, one was, uh, I believe it was last one. Happened to be riding in an emergency call, the back of an apparatus, a fire truck, that, uh, en, en route turned down the Chickahaw Trail, which I found to be a very smooth experience. Uh, having, having either driven or ridden the trucks down that street in the past, knowing that you couldn't actually achieve the speed limit, it was a very pleasant experience. The other thing I noted was, uh, and I realize it's actually in the town of Kitty Hawk. Uh, in front of the town bank, they replaced a portion of our multi-use path with concrete. I just wasn't aware of the need for that to be replaced.
I'm gonna ask the town planner, I'm gonna put him on the spot, he can brief us on that. But I, I did want to preface the comment, um, I don't know if you recall, but this is a section of US one fifty-eight where the right-of-way is nowhere. The actual right-of-way line is virtually a, a minimum number of feet right off the edge of the asphalt. That concrete piece of, uh, uh, walkway is actually owned by the owner of the property. But Wes, you go ahead.
Peter summed it up pretty well. Uh, the site plan that was approved for, uh, town bank, it did actually have a note, a side note saying that that concrete, or the sidewalk was to be replaced with concrete. They do not, they do not give any specific reason as to why. I think it's more of an aesthetic reason. But, uh, they did contact us ahead of time as the note required on the site plan, and they coordinated with the public works director as to how it should be done.
Okay, we just missed that in the plan.
It was a part of the site plan, yes, sir.
I missed that part of the plan. Thank you.
Yes, sir, like I said, they, they did contact us, and that's what the note it said. And, uh, Jason Sawyer, Public Works, they worked it out with him, uh, to make sure it meets his requirements. The width is still the same, I believe it's five feet. They didn't change the width.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And where'd you be, Smith? That's it?
I have nothing.
George?
Nothing.
Nothing? Tony?
I just wanted to mention one thing that, uh, everybody knows, but I wanted to kind of say it publicly, is, uh, we recently did a redesign on the town hall. And, um, I was talking to the town manager before the meeting to say how professional it looks and what a great job they did. And I really, I admire it. It feels good walking in there. We, I remember walking in there many times with a lot of clutter. It really looks good, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Having no other business before us, council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.